Call the order, the Tuesday December 7th. Meeting of Michigan City Common Council. Uh, let us stand, pledge, and silent prayer. Okay, Ms. Snilab, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons. Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman. We have six present and three absent.
Uh, is anybody online, Kayla? Could you, it might be Jane. Let's double check that.
Yep, I think it is.
Oh, Linda Simmons, I bet.
Yeah, she was.
Um, is he, is that him? Could you, Mr. Simmons, are you, is it, are you on?
Can you hear me? I'm here.
Yes, okay, thank you, sir. We got you. Okay, on to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to? Motion to approve.
Support.
There's been a motion in a second. Ms. Snilab, on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Pres- present.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Um, and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
And do we have any reports from our standing committees?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, the Labor Relations Committee had an executive session last Friday at 3:00 PM to discuss the fire and police contracts. Uh, in attendance was myself, Councilman Paul Preswellinsky, Councilman, uh, Dabney, uh, City Attorney Amber Lepage, City Controller Yvonne Hoffmaster, City Personnel Director Andrea Smith, and there is a meeting scheduled tomorrow at 5:00 PM, uh, with the fire and on Monday morning at 8:30 with the Police Department.
Thank you, sir. Any other reports from standing committees? On to the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, uh, the Finance Committee met, uh, committee members in, in, uh, in attendance with myself, uh, Councilman Preswellinsky, as well as, uh, Controller Hoffmaster and Deputy Controller Wall. Uh, we voted unanimously to approve all the claims.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The claims docket for December 7th, 2021, Fund Number 2042 Riverboat Claims was $96,931.94 EFT was zero, Fund Number 2031 Boyd Development, $76,990 total claims were $173,921.94. Uh, any reports of special or select committees this evening?
We have to take a vote on the claims.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Snilab, on the vote, please.
I need a motion on a second.
Motion to approve a claim.
Support.
Has been a motion in a second. On the vote, please.
Who was first?
Support.
Thank you. Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, on to reports of select or special committees. Do we have any this evening? Seeing that there are none, any reports of city officers or departments? Any reports from any city officers or departments? Um, Ms. Snilab, do we have any petitions this evening?
There are no petitions.
No petitions. And do we have any communications this evening?
Correspondence was received in clerk's office on November 30th from Attorney James Meyer regarding his determination providing legal services to the Common Council effective December 31st, 2021.
Okay, Ms. Snilab, uh, any resolutions?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Board of Public Works and Safety of the General Fund 1001 for the year 2021 in Michigan City, Indiana, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And does the author have anything to add?
Yes, um, Controller Hoffmaster is supposed to be online, but I don't see her. Controller Hoffmaster is supposed to be online, but I don't see her, but is she on there? Oh, I see her now. So, um, the next three resolutions, um, she can speak to, but, um, basically it's the end of the year and it's increasing and decreasing certain, um, mu- uh, budgetary items to move them around to cover costs, um, for the end of the year, and, and this happens, um, at the end of each year, but she can speak to each one of these and she is online if there are any questions. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Hoffmaster?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, if there are no questions, but you can just go to the public and if there are any questions from council, she can answer.
I thought she was going to speak, okay. Um, any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public, public comments, and now closed comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, all three resolutions that we're looking here, as far as I can tell, are all worded exactly the same. So what I would like to know is an explanation of each resolution and what it stands for. Because Resolution Number One that was just read by the clerk is the same wording as Resolution Three, and what do they mean? And what are the amounts of money that we're transferring? Explanation, please.
Ms. Hoffmaster?
Um, well, the, the one you're looking at right now is a resolution to move money around within the budget of the Board of Public Works and Safety. Um, I'm asking that the council decrease the water account by $9,000, the printing and advertising contractual account by $1,000, and the postage account by $1,000, and increase the unemployment compensation for $11,000. So this was, um, just the amount of unemployment that was paid out at the beginning of this year. Um, we just went over budget, so we just need to transfer these funds, these excess funds and these other accounts into the unemployment line. Do you want me to explain all three of them right now or just this one?
You can do them at each one.
Okay. Or you could just take one at a time. That's fine, just take one at a time because we gotta go through each one of them individually in a way. So this, that is the one that, that you're. Okay, thank you. Voting on right now. All right.
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Ms. Snilab, on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, we're gonna go to read one? You wanna read the second one, Ms. Snilab?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Mayor's Office of the General Fund 1001 for the year 2021, Michigan City, Indiana, introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the author? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Online comments from the public? Public comment is now closed, comments from the council? Seeing that there are none, Ms.
We have Ms. Hoffmaster, um, explain this one, too.
Yvonne?
Okay, um, this one, as stated in the title, is a transfer in the budget of the Mayor's Office, and we're, um, asking to decrease his other communication and transportation line by $500 and increase his office supply line by $500, and this is due to just the increasing, um, cost in office supplies.
Do we?
Thank you.
Have any other questions? Uh, do we have a motion?
I, I move that we approve. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in the second. Ms. Snilab, on the vote, please.
Um, Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, Ms. Snilab, can you read the third and last resolution?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the City Hall of the General Fund 1001 for the year 2021 in Michigan City, Indiana, and this is also introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And the, uh, does the author have anything to add? Nope. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Seeing that there are none, any comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what I would like to ask the Controller, and if she doesn't know, uh, to please get back to the council and let us, let us know, no matter this, whether this gets voted up or gets voted down, but what I wanna know is why there's, there was, there was an increase in, let's just say, $15,000 in utilities electric for City Hall. What, what, what happened? What caused that? Was there an increase in the NIPSCO megawatts or kilowatts or harrids measured? When did we see this happening? Uh, I know that this just didn't happen in the last couple of weeks, and now it appeared on the, uh, agenda. Uh, as far as my knowledge goes, this has been increasing for the last, I don't know, two months, I think I've been hearing about it, when they went around and started shutting lights off and, you know, turning down the heat and what have you. I just wanna know, uh, you know, what's taking place. I know we had an ESG study taken here three years ago, and, uh, certain things were supposed to be taken into place, uh, there. You know, I asked people in the administration, have they looked at it? They said, no, we don't pay much attention to that, and that, that particular program was supposed to save the city, if I have the numbers right, over, Mr. Myers, you can, uh, correct me, but over a certain period of time, it was supposed to save the city a million dollars in, uh, u- utility costs. So I just wanna know what happened, why it happened, and what the city's doing to correct the situation. So if you have any explanation, I would, uh, certainly appreciate it. Uh, Controller Hoffmaster, if not, then, uh, at the next council meeting, we could get an explanation for who's ever in charge of utilities in City Hall here and why it went so far over budget and what we're doing to, uh, to correct it. And then I, and I also have another concern, because if we have, we had that ESG study done in every department in the city, whether it be, uh, central services, central maintenance, every fire department, the senior center, what have you. So my concern is, if, if we're over budget here at City Hall by 14,000, are there gonna be other departments coming to us saying, hey, we're over budget too because we didn't do this or we didn't follow the program? That's another one of my concerns. Uh, so what I'd like to have, uh, Controller Hoffmaster, and we can talk about it more tomorrow because I'm gonna see you tomorrow afternoon, is, uh, the reason why, the root cause of why this is at $15,000 and why we're asking for more money, and for the future, what we're gonna do to eliminate the cost of an increased electricity usage in City Hall. Thank you. Um, would you like me, there, there is a couple reasons for this. Um, the first one was there was a gas leak that the, that we were not aware of, NIPSCO actually pointed it out to us, and the, uh, uh, a second one is that, that the, the cost has gone up, and the third one is, is that the, um, heating and cooling system in City Hall is antiquated and not efficient at all. Um, so the City Hall is not the only budget that needed a transfer into their utility account, several of our departments have needed that. Um, on the, the ESG, um, I, I, I know the sanitary district had one of their engineers look at their plan, so I was going to reach out to Michael Cuss to see if we could borrow this person to look at our, um, ESG plan and, and see if we actually are seeing the savings that they projected. Um, so, uh, that's my plan. Um, just this line item went over budget. Okay, well, what I'd like to have is a written explanation, uh, given to every, or an email given to every councilperson so we know exactly, uh, what happened, like this gas leak, when it happened at City Hall, what NIPSCO, uh, said, and, and what I'm looking at here, this utilities is called the Utilities Electric, doesn't say anything about utilities, natural gas, so I don't know if that falls into two different categories. No, it does not. Or how it's categorized. This is for the NIPSCO bill. It pays the gas and electric. Okay, okay, all right, but yeah, I would like to get a timeline on all this stuff, uh, when it happened, and. Yep, I'll, I'll get ahold of, um, Chris Yudelski in the Mayor's Office. He's the one that manages all of this with the building, and I'll have him send something out. Okay. To all of the council. Right, and, and Yvonne, I don't need, we don't need this by tomorrow at noon, you know, it's, uh, I'm satisfied as long as we get an explanation at the next council meeting of what's taking place, and you can get ahold of Mr. Jeff Wright, probably through Mike Cuss, and if he's the one that's gonna help, because I know that Mike, or Jeff looked at the, uh, system at the sanitary district, I believe it was him, and went through the whole system and verified it and said it looked good. So yeah, yeah, the, good idea. So anyway, just want a explanation by the, at, at the next council meeting of what took place. Thank you.
Control, thank.
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, so with this, um, transfer, do we, so when we did the budget last year, do we increase year over year how much we were gonna spend for utilities? And, and, um, this is just what we need to make up from it? Or did we keep it the same year over year? Because I mean, last year was COVID, we weren't in City Hall, um, as much as we are this year, and I didn't know if there was a difference in that. Could that have been part of it?
Yeah, that, that's actually a big part of it. Um, and we can't quite figure out what we did when we did the 21, 2021 budget, but the number budgeted for City Hall's, um, gas and electric for 2021 was actually about $20,000 less than what the budget was in 2020.
Okay, so.
So that's, that's the main, that's another reason why this looks like it's so far over budget, and I, you know, and it could have been just, uh, we just typed in the wrong number, we pulled it from the wrong line, you, we don't really know, we, we tried to figure out how we missed this, but it's one of those things, and they, they have other money in their budget that could make up for it, so it, it, it wasn't, um, catastrophic that, that, that we had, uh, made a mistake on, on budgeting this number last year.
Okay, yeah, because that's what I was thinking, it had something to do with maybe year over year and how you, um, what number you put in there for utilities.
Right, but we, we did put it back to the, what it was before in the 2022 budget.
Okay, so you did go back to what we had for 2020, the 2020 numbers?
Correct, correct, so, yeah. So hopefully we'll stay within that budget for 2022.
All right, thank you. Um, I move for adoption.
Mr. President, I had one more.
I'll, I'll pull it back.
Okay, thank you, go ahead. Yeah, and, uh, with Ms. Hoffmaster's comments that the heating system and the cooling system is, I guess, antiquated here in City Hall and possibly needs to be, uh, renovated or a new one put in, uh, we have ARP money that we could use to possibly put in a, uh, new heating and cooling system in City Hall. You know, we talk about being green, we talk about doing away with the carbon footprint and, and that, and the sustainability committee, which, uh, the President is, the Chairman's here this evening, is, it's, we're all about trying to get green, trying to get away from the use of, uh, coal power. Uh, I think that the city and Mr. Yudelski or whoever here in City Hall, the city engineer, maybe it's time they take a look at it and see what it's gonna cost to put in new systems in order to cut these heating bills and cooling bills down for the, for the future. Thank you.
I move for adoption.
Attorney Meyer?
Yeah, just point of information, ESG pursuant to their contract did submit a report demonstrating their, the savings required. I believe all of you recall, or at least the ones who are involved, there's like 12 different projects, 13, uh, total. I referred that report to Engineer Wright, Jeff Wright, for the city, and he's reviewed it. I haven't seen, he's gonna write a written, uh, I guess you call it opinion or report about it. He's orally told me that their report is accurate and that they have met their guarantee requirement. Mr. Wright had zero to do with the sanitary district in reference to that. He is on the board, but he has nothing to do with their electrical or ESG contract project.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do we have a motion? Oh, Councilman Paul Preswell.
I have a question about that ESG report. Did it say anything in that ESG report about, uh, updating the system at City Hall? And if so, or if not, why hasn't that been addressed?
I don't believe you were on the council at the time.
No, but, uh.
But it was, that was one of the items. ESG, of those who were involved, we car, actually suggested about 20 different projects, maybe up to 30. The council decided not to do the change in the HVAC system here in City Hall because there was a question raised by council members about the theoretical possibility that the City Hall may not be here for an extended period of time, and therefore they didn't wanna put in a new 20-year system if there was going to be a change in City Hall, and therefore the council voted, but it voted on which ones were approved, one of them it did not approve, was the City Hall HVAC change.
So with that being said, as long as we sit here, we'll never achieve the goal from the report, correct?
No, you, you achieved what they promised they were going to save you. Their guarantee was based on the projects you approved, not on the ones that you did not approve. Of course, they didn't include any of those in their ultimate calculations.
Oh, okay, let's clarify this. I didn't approve anything on that ESG report, all right? But what I'm asking is, should, would that help, uh, get us to what they said we should be at because?
You're, you're already at what they said you should be at, based on the projects that were actually constructed.
Okay.
If you were to implement a new HVAC system here, that would be above and beyond.
Okay.
What they.
It would be above and beyond, so actually we should find out, um, why is it, why, why are people running around shutting off the lights and, and that if we have achieved a goal? That, that's the question that should be asked, not putting a new system in, so I think that's what we need to focus on. Thank you.
And do we have a motion? Are there any other comments?
No, uh, well, I'll just say this before I make the motion, um, just to add again, um, and I, I think that, um, the difference between 2020 and then going down about $20,000 in 2021 for utilities, um, probably was one of the biggest impacts since, um, don't know why we did that, but, um, hopefully with the, uh, change for 2022, that we'll be on track next year and won't have to do this, so, um, I move for approval.
Second.
Spin a motion in a second. Ms. Snilab, on the vote, please.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All righty, Ms. Snilab, on to the ordinances. Uh, could you read the first ordinance on second reading by title?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance number 4598, commonly known as 2022 Salary Ordinance, to increase the annual salary for the position of the city arborist, and this is introduced by Ms. Jagus.
And do we have any comments from the author?
Yes, um, I shared with people here, and, uh, it's also available online on my website, D-A-L-I-A-Z-Y-G-A-S dot com. Uh, a letter I got from the, uh, Indiana Department of Natural Resources, this is Carrie Tausha, she is the State Community and Urban Forestry Program Coordinator. She was very well aware of our, you know, past history of multiple foresters going in and out of the job, and she wrote this letter, which I would like to read, and I think I timed myself, it was way less than five minutes, so I'm gonna go. "To the members of the Michigan City Council, I write in support of the city arborist position and a wage rate that would be competitive in a market of specialized and skilled professionals in order to attract an experienced ISA, which stands for International Society of Arboretry Culture, certified arborist with municipal arboretry culture, urban forest management experience. Indiana community and urban forests are a resource that by their nature require a more specialized and intensive level of management than that of what most of us consider to be a forest. They must be managed as green infrastructure alongside gray infrastructure found in communities and urban areas across the state. What I would like the council to consider is that most, is that nearly daily we are learning that planting and maintaining existing mature trees is one of the most impactful and cost-effective ways to help communities reduce stormwater runoff and flooding, remove and avoid particulate pollution from the air we breathe, reduce the ever-increasing urban heat island effect that exacerbates the production of ozone, sequester carbon, reduce hospitalizations due to cardiac and respiratory illnesses, improve student test performance, and positively impact infant birth weights. While this list may seem too broad to be impacted by the same community infrastructure trees, I encourage you to visit Vibrant Cities Lab," and I put the URL down, "where you can find research reports, case studies, and additional resources. I also encourage you to consider that trees, when maintained, are the only municipal infrastructure that provide more benefits to communities as they grow and age. Bigger trees provide bigger community benefits on all accounts. A study conducted in 2010." A study conducted in 2010 showed that on average in Indiana, for every $1 invested into tree planting, care, and maintenance, including removals when needed, the net benefits provided by trees produce $1.77 return, $1.77 return on the investment. Significant federal resources are accessible to Michigan City, and she didn't mention a couple of grants to me today, in the form of grants based on urban forest resource need, demographics, and geographic location within the Great Lakes watershed. I do not believe the community will have a capacity or structure to utilize these funds without a strong urban forester or arborist that is supported by their tree board and city council. This cooperation is needed to maximize the resource and grow a greener and healthier community for the future of Michigan City. Indiana's community and urban forests play a critical role in the quality of life for citizens across the state. We live our lives within these forests, but they must be cared for if we want our children to grow and thrive there too. Carrie Tausha, State Community and Urban Forestry Program Coordinator, Indiana DNR, Department of Forestry.
Okay, any comments from the public? State your name and address first.
Yeah, Nancy Maldenhour, 107 K Lane, Michigan City, and I am Chair of the Sustainability Commission. I tried to cross off the items that Dahlia already mentioned, but maybe I forgot some of those. So value, the trees have an indirect, direct and indirect value to communities. So I just wanted to highlight what some of those are. Under direct values, they actually reduce air conditioning costs. Heating costs are reduced when there's a tree windbreak. Yards landscaped with trees are more valuable than non-landscaped homes. Trees increase property values. Trees decrease electric utility bills. Less electricity means less power used, less building of power plants, and less pollution. Trees reduce carbon dioxide. They improve air quality. They reduce storm runoff. They enhance the beauty of communities. They reduce stress and improve health for residents. They increase our quality of life. I was surprised by this, but this is backed by research. Over the 50-year life of a tree, and this is one single tree, it provides $57,000 of economic value. And this is backed up by research by the Forestry Division at the Utah State University. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention because some people just think of trees. We think of shade. We think they're pretty, but they have economic impact on communities that plant trees and take care of them. So thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Michigan City, Mick Wolf, Michigan City Tree Board President. I do support what Dahlia had to say, and this is Maldenhour here. But what we're looking for when we plant trees is the supervision to keep these assets going for the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years, so we get the full value of the planting in the trees, what they can give to the community. And we need the experience. This is not a type of job where you can get somebody new off the street. It takes an extraordinary amount of expertise and experience to do this. And the only way to go out and entertain a person of this kind of caliber is pay them, pay, you know, come up with a salary that matches their experience. So I was here last month and we discussed several different ideas. So I'm back again and just hoping that you take this consideration. And if there's any type of questions that the council has, I guess this would be the time to raise them so we can come back next meeting and finalize this. So I ask if there's any questions from the council itself.
I have a question. I think at the last council meeting, and I don't know if you can repeat it, but we talked about the app, about not having any applicants previously, or did we talk about the average salary? It was one or the other. What, you know, what is the average salary? Because we're talking about competitive.
The average, the average salary in Indianapolis is $95,000. South Bend is in the 75, the $78,000.
75.
We have urban foresters in Valparaiso, East Chicago, even in Gary, you know, they're making a competitive wage in the 70s. So 62 is still, it's a number to work with, you know, to get the ball rolling. It's a lot better than it was when we walked here, when we came up here asking for the increase two weeks ago or three weeks ago.
And I have one other question. Are there, are there companies that provide contractual services to do urban forestry or, you know, just like you have an engineering service that might provide engineering services? Are there companies that do that outside of having a particular one person?
No, there's not.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that.
There's, I had several discussions with the mayor. And what this, the actual definition that we need to kind of go by is the urban forester, not the forester. The forester is more the, the micro or the bigger picture person. He's out there managing the forests. The urban forester is the one who manages the metro, the cities, the community forests. And, you know, it's kind of, you're more dealing on the macro level than the micro level. So you're bringing it down. You are also working hand in hand with the forester, forestry departments for NIPSCO. All these other entities that use right-of-ways in the city and the trees grow in. Certain issues like for this new double track project. I've already been working with NIPSCO on, with them on discussing, and, you know, we fortunately had to take out some very nice trees so they could put up those very large transmission lines that are going to go and feed this new project. But at the same time, we were able to keep NIPSCO heels to the fire and make sure that they planted new trees where they had to take out the old ones. In some cases, we were able to get a better ratio. They took out one tree, we had them plant two trees in their spots. So you, you, you know, the urban forester is more of the bulldog for the city. And what's got the city, the city's interests at heart. And we have to hold tree companies accountable for their work. Because, you know, we don't want the citizens to get hurt out there. Not hurt, but more or less get taken advantage of. We need to, you know, the companies out there doing work underground. We need, the urban forester has a hand in the greenery of Michigan City. And there's, it's got to be done from, you know, the funnel-mundled basis is from, from right here, from City Hall on up. You know, we're going to have with the double track project, we're going to be putting in that new track and there's going to be a lot of street closures and barriers to keep people from going into the tracks and everything. You're going to have to plant some kind of greenery to make these areas a lot softer. And that's where this person's going to come in and earn his money. And with some of this new government, US government monies that they just passed, there's a lot of money that's allotted to plant trees.
You've got another question here, Councilman. Yeah, Mr. Wolf, you mentioned South Bend at $75,000, Indianapolis at $95,000. Where did you get those figures from?
One of the other tree board members lives in Indianapolis and he was able to get us that figure.
That what? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The Indianapolis figure.
From another tree, from another board member? You got that?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of these, they're selling their public knowledge.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to know where it came from so I could go on that website to just verify that's what the numbers are. But I'll do that. I'm going to do that anyway. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Councilman Don, or Paul Preslinsky, sorry.
I would like to know why, you know, Mr. Wolf, how long have you been on the board?
I have close to be 20 years of being tree board president.
Okay. Could you answer me why during the mayor administration, the tree board was so poorly funded?
Well, a lot of it comes down to the folks up front at that time that sit in your seats. Mr. Mayor's administration actually, at the end, he put $50,000 per year. And so we had $100,000 at the end of his administration. And we used that coming into there.
I believe that was one year and that was one reason that, because I was complaining so much about it to my brother about no trees being planted around where I live. And I think that the whole misconception of what's going on with the tree board is that what you just said, it's about us, the members sitting up here. It's not that at all. It's about the advocacy of the board. So my question to you is, you're telling me that we couldn't put a IOP out? Or to, did I say that right? IOP to see if we can get outside firm, I don't care if they're from Chesterton. If they have the knowledge to come in here and manage these trees to help us out instead of, under a contract, instead of having a stationary employee, having an employee at this time. And that's, that's my take on it. So do you have a problem with us putting the IOP out there? IRP, I'm sorry.
But I think you would be, it would be extremely expensive for something like that. And let me get back to your question here. Under the mayor administration, doesn't mean we didn't plant any trees because it didn't get appropriated. A lot of money came from grants that the forester wrote for the city, in-kind work. It's, monies came to do tree work in other, other ways that other than being appropriated by the city council.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the council? Oh, yes, more public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you.
Ernie Hollahan, Michigan City 302 Gladys Street. I'm just wondering if the tree board followed up with contractors on Woodland and Nav. They finished those two houses and now they moved over next to them and they're cutting trees down. I know they had a big issue because they started cutting trees without authorization on the first two houses. Have they got the okay to continue on? Because I know if you turn down that road, that whole wooded area is flooded there. It's, it's high water table there. I was just curious if they got extra permits to go continue on cutting the rest of those trees down.
That might be the necessity for the forester, right? Is that, would you go to answer to that? Right, exactly.
Go to the microphone and say that. Public can hear.
That's where we need to circle back for the urban forester so he can look at permits, answer the questions such as this fellow here. That's within the margins of the urban forester. You know, needs to be checking in with the building department, sanitary, any kind of projects. That's where this, this person comes in. So, you know, I don't see how you can hire an outside firm. You need somebody here in City Hall to be on, on call to deal with these kind of situations. There's, there's stuff like this going all around. The forester, the urban forester will certainly pay for the time and the energy and the savings.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone currently serving on a tree board that is arborist or a history or a background in forestry?
I am currently the one that's doing that for the city. I'm doing that pro bono.
You're an arborist?
Yes, sir.
Are you interested in the position?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman, oh, any of, I'm sorry. Comments from the, this is still our public comment. We've been asking so many questions. Yes, thank you.
Members of the council, thank you. My name is Donna Cavanagh. I am the originator of the tree board in Michigan City. I went to then Mayor Groson and asked her to start the tree board along with the forester at the time. Both of us started the Michigan City Tree Board in the late 1990s. I nominated Mick Wolf, who's been a great proponent for our trees in Michigan City. So I'm going to ask you, I do radio and television in all my spare time. Today I was on PBSWNIT playing The Grinch. I'm going to ask you not to be a grinch, okay, here in Michigan City. When it comes to money for a forester, it is very important for our city. This is a beautiful city. I live in Long Beach, but I go to school in Michigan City. I shop in Michigan City. I've been on boards in Michigan City when you would allow me to. And I was on the Urban Forest Council in the state of Indiana. I went all to, all the way to the presidency. I was on from 1999 to 2005. It was my designation for Tree City USA that we won in 2000. And we had a big celebration in Millennium Park right over here. We even planted a tree from the Jefferson plantation in Virginia. We have trees that I can tell you about and Mick probably knows, planted all around Michigan City from various designations, from governors in Indiana, et cetera, tulip trees, all of that. It is very important to keep up the Michigan City Tree Board. There have been years. I will be honest, and I haven't been able to follow it all the time because I had some tragedy in my family. I had to go various places. I couldn't always keep an eye on the tree board. And we were defunded by the governor at the Indiana Urban Forest Council. And what did we do? We trained NIPSCO how to tree, trim trees. We set up tree boards all over the state of Indiana. We were working with the city of Michigan City. In order to be a Tree City USA and to have a great city full of trees that are healthy, you have to have a survey of all the trees. Oh my God, back in 1999, we had people coming in doing the diameters. We hired them from all over the country. It was something nobody had ever done. I had people around the country saying, this can't be done in Michigan City. It's not been done anywhere else, but we did it. And we had a very vigorous tree board and then things started to fall apart. We weren't getting the funding. We weren't getting the respect. We weren't getting the respect. Then we got Mick. Mick I nominated, thank God, because he's been a great president and he's been very, very vigorous towards supporting trees. Now, I'm just going to tell you, and, and you were great about giving an idea of what trees are important for. But let me tell you, we have to do a lot of work to get the trees back in Michigan City to where they belong. But here are the top, now I'm a, a communications major, okay? So I'm sorry, I'm going to have to do this. All right. They do this in Congress. You see it on, on C-SPAN, right? So here are the top five reasons for money for a tree arborist or a tree forester. We used to share one with Laporte. I don't know what happened to that. And two years ago, we had a wonderful arborist, I believe, or forester. She was here. I was so excited. I met with her at one of the coffee shops and she quit because her husband got a job somewhere else. I believe we lost her. Here are the reasons we need money for trees. Number one, beauty. We have so many beautiful trees in Michigan City. I can't tell you how many times people called me at home when I was president of the Michigan City Tree Board and said, they just cut my, bombed my tree. Like this gentleman said, it, it breaks people's hearts. I know you, the Prezwalinski brothers, you went through some of that in your neighborhood over by St. Anne's. I, I'm, uh, or, uh, yes, I'm sorry. Really quickly, number two, safety, very important. Pride in our community. We have bragging rights when we win, win Tree City USA and other, uh, other things around the state. Um, and ancestry. So many people have trees in their neighborhoods in front of their homes that were planted there a hundred years ago. Maybe their grandfathers put it in their fathers. This is so important. I'm going to get back involved with the tree board. I'm going to help any way I can, but please, the average salary for an arborist or a tree forester is about sixty-eight thousand. But we have other communities in Indiana that are paying a lot more that we have to go up against. Please put money aside for trees in Michigan City. It will save your community, it will stop crime, it will stop community, uh, pollution. It will stop the, all of the big, you know, I just got a three hundred and fifty-five dollar Nitsco bill for September when I didn't even put on the, 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 the heat. It will help, you know, canopy the community to bring down the, our bills. So please, I, I'm sorry, I'm very, you can see I'm very emotional about this, but I believe in the tree board. They have worked very hard for over twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. We really worked very hard to get one. Please support us, get money for the forester, do whatever you can, and thank you for your time. And, and, and may I say one other thing? This has to do with Michigan City. This is the eightieth year of Pearl Harbor. I will tell you as a film and television person, I was in the old theater that's over by Marquette, Marquette Theater. Remember that one? Big, big movie theater? In May of two thousand and one, May of two thousand and one, the movie Pearl Harbor, the latest version came out. Now, it was part romantic story and part real, reality of what happened in Pearl Harbor. There were, uh, the biggest theater there is a thousand seats. There were teenagers from all over Michigan City that went to see that movie because it, it had a lot, a lot of young people in it. And before the movie started, they were yelling and screaming and throwing popcorn at each other. Some of you young people watching right now might, might have been there. But to their credit, as soon as that movie started and the bombing of Pearl Harbor was seen on that movie screen, which was awesome, the way they depicted it, you couldn't hear a pin drop in all thousand people in that theater. So I want to say to the young people who are probably now in their twenties and thirties, who are in that theater, God bless you. And less than four or five minutes later, we were attacked in New York City, in Pennsylvania, and in the Capitol. And that was, uh, twenty years ago in two thousand and one. So I just wanted to say that remembrance and, um, and I appreciate the young people in Michigan City that were there. And, uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Any other comments from the council? Seeing that there are none, um. Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, going to hold it over for third reading? Okay. All right, Ms. Nyla, would you please read the, um, the, uh, second ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second re, second reading by title only. Third amendment to the city's internal control policy in section two dash four nine eight and chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And Mr. Dabney is ill today, so is there anybody that has any comments in his place? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Online comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Councilwoman Dan?
Yeah, this was, um, at the last meeting, this was just to, um, make sure we're, we're in compliance with some changes that happened. Um, I know control of half master is on, but it's just making sure that we amend the internal controls policy to reflect some changes that were made downstate.
Any other comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, can we, oh, was that the author comment? Those council comments. Uh, can we have second and third reading on this?
Is that a motion?
Yeah. I'm going to have third reading.
I support.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Okay. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Okay. Snala, can you read the same ordinance on third reading, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only. The third amendment to the city's internal control policy in section two dash four nine eight and chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And in the absence of the author, we'll go right to public comment. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any online comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Support.
There's been a motion and a second. Um, Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
Aye.
There's seven in favor and no one opposed.
I'm ready, Ms. Nyla. Can you read the third ordinance, ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. Amending ordinance four five nine eight, commonly known as the two thousand twenty-two salary ordinance to increase hourly rate of an operator to the street department from twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-three dollars. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Prezwalinski and Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
And do the authors have anything to add this evening?
Mr. President, uh, yeah, what this, what this is, is with the new contract that was negotiated between the, uh, Board of Works and the Ask Me Union, which is the street department workers, uh, in that new negotiation, uh, contract, the operators' pay went up from twenty-two dollars and twenty-one cents an hour up to twenty-three dollars an hour. And what this ordinance here does is just changes the salary ordinance to cover that twenty-three dollars an hour. And, uh, I guess if I can at this time, I'd also like to make the motion for, uh, third reading this evening.
Support.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Uh, Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
No more comments from the authors? Comments from the council? Oh, a public comment. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Public comments are closed. Any comments from the council? Councilman Paul Prezwalinski?
Um, as a co-author of this and, uh, being on the Labor Negotiating Committee, I'm, uh, happy that we could, uh, reach a equitable agreement with the, uh, street department workers and that, um, also that they recognized, uh, because it was brought up to the administration that, uh, Labor Relations Committee is supposed to be involved. And I want to thank them for following the ordinance. Thank you.
Ms. Nyla, uh, any other comments from the council? Snala, can you read the same ordinance on third reading?
An ord, an ordinance on third reading by title only. Amending ordinance four five nine eight, commonly known as the two thousand twenty-two salary ordinance to increase the hourly rate of an operator into the street department from twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-three dollars.
And are there any comments from the authors?
Uh, just one comment. I know Mr. Drew White's here tonight, the president of the, uh, Board of Works, and I just want to thank him and the board for, uh, negotiating the contract along with our, uh, Labor Relations Committee that was involved with it all. So I think it's very fair and equitable contract that the, uh, street department is going to be, uh, getting from the city. And, uh, I think everything went well in those negotiations. So I want to thank you for that, Mr. White.
Thank you. Councilman Paul Prezwalinski?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Um, comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
And Ms. Nyla, would you please read the fourth ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. Um, amending municipal code section two dash four five seven, commission of social status of African-American males. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
In Ms. Till, Tillman's absence, we will move on to, uh.
I'll move the table until the next meeting.
There's been a motion?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Set second by Dahlia?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezwalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezwalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Mack.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed to table it until the next meeting.
Mr. President, I would like to ask for a five-minute recess.
There's a need for a five-minute recess? Take a five-minute recess. All right, we'll give everyone a chance to get situated.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
All right, we're back. Ms. Nyla, would you please read the first ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only. Um, amending section thirty-eight dash forty and section thirty-eight dash forty-one of the Michigan City Municipal Code to provide eligibility for the promise scholarship to all students who attend Michigan City area schools and creating section thirty-eight dash forty-two in the Michigan City Municipal Code to create two tiers of financial scholarship awards. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And in the absence of Ms. Tillman, we'll go straight to public comments. Are there any comments from the public?
Uh, first of all, thank you for another opportunity to speak. I'm respects, respectfully asking all of you.
Name and address, please.
Kim Noaskey, twenty-eight, twenty-eight North Eight Twenty-Five West, Michigan City, Indiana. Thank you for another opportunity to speak. I'm respectfully asking you, in the spirit of inclusion, to help not hinder Michigan City area schools and as a show of support for our local students, including the only remaining group to be left out of the promise scholarship, those kids who reside within the boundaries of the city's only public school system but happen to live on the wrong side of city limit signs. There are hopes that granting the scholarship to renters may bring back students who have left Michigan City area schools. I clarified with Janet Butner that the numbers spread at the last meeting of students attending other high schools were those within the four-six-three-six-oh zip code, not necessarily just city residents. It's likely that a large number of students who have left M C A S may be those from outlying areas because they are closer to these school systems. And denying them the scholarship doesn't offer them any incentive to return to M C A S. But opening up the scholarship to Market High School does give parochial students an incentive to leave M C A S, which results in a loss of seven thousand one hundred and fifty per year for each student. This loss in revenue hurts all students in our public school system, both the city residents and the non-city residents alike. Where they live is not the fault of the students, just like the renters, Michigan City High School students who aren't city residents shouldn't feel less than. Denying this last remaining group falls short of a sense of inclusion in our school system. They are not being discriminated against because of the color of their skin or their social economic status, but they are because of what their address is. I remember the frustration, hurt and disappointment families in the outlying areas felt in two thousand and sixteen when the scholarship was first approved. If renters and market students are now included, I fear this will only be compounded. Michigan City is not a city limit school. When the county schools were first included within the city, within the M C A S system, I'm guessing the intention wasn't to distinguish between the city kids and the county kids. Why doesn't the M C S motto, one city, one pack, apply to the promise scholarship? Why not make all the confusing qualifications simple and fair and demonstrate that the city council wants all local students to succeed? I almost didn't speak tonight, but I had to, not just for my own eighth grade daughter, but for all those students in Colespring Township, Springfield Township, Pine Township, places where three of eight of our elementary schools are located, Long Beach, Michiana Shores, Trail Creek, and Potawatomi Park. I care about all of our area students. That is why, regardless of what you all decide tonight, just as I have done since my oldest began in Michigan area schools in nineteen ninety-seven, I will still help other students I know and will meet in any way I can. That includes spreading the good news about the promise scholarship benefit to whoever qualifies because it's just the right thing to do. Last of all, I respectfully ask all of you, in the spirit of goodwill, inclusiveness and support of your city's only public high school, to please consider a redraft of the promise scholarship to include all of the Michigan City area school district students. At the very least, implement a yearly review to monitor the effectiveness and the scholarship in its current state and to see if the funds would be available. It's not too late to make sure the changes to the promise scholarship are, in your own words, done right.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any online comments from the public? Comments from the council? Uh, Councilwoman Dan?
Um, this particular one, I just want to state that, um, I know Councilwoman Tillman planned to remove her name um, from, uh, this, uh, proposed ordinance. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, um, we stated that, um, moving forward.
Okay, do we have a motion? Seeing that the councilwoman removed her sponsorship of this, what she, she, what she can't here to do it herself, and we don't have a motion on third reading, uh, the proposed ordinance dies on for lack of support. Snala, will you please read the, what is that? The, uh, second ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section thirty-eight dash forty-two through An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating Section 38-42 through Section 38-47 in the Michigan City Municipal Code to codify and adjust the terms and conditions of Exhibit A from Section 38-41A of the Promise Scholarship into the Michigan City Municipal Code to expand the program to include Market High School students effective as of 2022 and students who reside in legal guardian in rental properties in Michigan City. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Presblewski, Mr. Don Presblewski, Mr. Simmons, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Deitch, and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
And do the authors have anything to add this evening? Councilwoman Dyche?
Yes, yes. Last council meeting, we had an amendment which pretty much replaced that section in its entirety to include pieces of the exhibit from the previous process that we had. It was an exhibit that was attached, so we included that. A couple of things. As far as Michigan City is concerned and the residents of Michigan City and who we represent, I would welcome funding from La Porte County government to participate in the Promise Scholarship and to include those additional students outside of the city limits of Michigan City. So I recommend possibly, we can send this ordinance over to the county and tell them that we do have students outside of Michigan City limits that would love to be a part of it, and maybe they can provide some additional funding for the Promise Scholarship to cover those students. But I am in full support of what we come up with, because we represent all families in Michigan City, regardless of what school they go to. And Marquette, just as well as Michigan City, is a part of the fabric of Michigan City. This isn't a school that's a five-by-night school. I support Michigan City area schools in fully. My daughter just graduated in 2019 as a distinguished grad there, but my oldest graduated as a distinguished grad from Marquette, and I worked two jobs for her to be there. I didn't have a voucher. So I think all residents should have the ability to access that money as a resident of Michigan City and as a taxpayer. So this ordinance is there to provide that. But also, Mrs. Butner has done a wonderful job of providing us information and a report twice a year, not just once a year. And I think we can always come back and reevaluate annually how we're doing and how much money we've spent to see if we need to tweak it. I think this is just only the beginning of that process. Thank you.
Any other comments from the authors? Councilwoman Paul Presblewski?
At this time, I would like to thank the services of Mr. Myers and Amber LaPage for helping us and for Councilwoman Deitch's help on getting this language codified and getting into ordinance form instead of always referring to an exhibit, because exhibit, there's... It's kind of problematic to enforce if it's not in ordinance form. But I agree in many aspects, in all aspects, of what Councilwoman Deitch has said this evening and in the past. And I know that there are some people who object and object even to the thought of adding people who go, city residents who go to parochial schools, because it's not only about attending high school, but it's also affects somebody who's attending a parochial elementary school. And the... I think that what it says in the ordinance justifies the changes, and that is Michigan City area schools and also that by offering scholarships to graduates of Michigan City and Marquette High School, Michigan City proposes to invest public dollars to raise the level, importance, performance of its student population and in the process, securing our community's bright future. So this is a program that started, and you can look at it in another way also, that it was non-inclusive to city residents that pay their fair share in city taxes and their children go to a parochial school. So in turn, now people who have children staying in elementary schools and go to Michigan City High School, they still get penalized. They get penalized one year. And so I think that it's good for the whole community, and I disagree with the concept of expanding the city program to the county level. And I do agree with Councilwoman Deitch's comments that maybe the county needs to fund a program and get on board with us, because we've already done the work and get the system rolling. But here's what I will also want to say this evening. A lot of people talk bitterly against this program and changing it. But I want to say this tonight, that no one ever said one iota about how much that the TIF districts take away from the school system and the taxes that they are deprived, the revenue that they are deprived of from the TIF districts. So now, as I gave you all the Y-22 form in June of this year that stated how much the tax settlement was, the settlement to the TIF district was half of the amount that the city received. The city received, I think, $8.6 million, and the TIF district received $4.5 million. So objectively, those comments, I believe, are not fair, and they're misleading the public on what's really going on on defunding the schools. So it's just like how many students were brought out are going to different area schools and they're, you know, in the system, and they may live in town, they may not live in town. So I am definitely in support of this program and in total support of changing the mechanism on how we fund it. So people can be naysayers, but I will say that I don't think I should be penalized if I'm a Michigan City resident and that I choose because of a particular reason to send my child to a parochial school. So to me, to me, that is a form of discrimination, religious discrimination. And I believe that that's something that you need to think about, because that's one of the main concepts of why this country was formed, was for religious freedom. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council or any of the authors? Councilman Don Presblewski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am in full support of this ordinance. I was in full support of it when we brought it before the council. I was for it five years ago when it first came about. I was all in favor of the parochial schools. And I think I was the only one on the council at that time that was in full support of the parochial schools. So that's where I stand. In the future, it's possible, just like what we're doing now, five years later, we're taking another step, another look at the program, we're expanding it. A couple of years down the road, we can see how this is going, and possibly we can expand it even further to children that live in the county. I don't have any problem with, you know, giving money to folks that live in the county and go to Michigan City schools. I just want to take it a step at a time. Whether the county wants to get involved with it or not, you know, that's up to them. But anyway, plus, we're representing the taxpayers here of Michigan City, and that's the way I look at it. Whether you send your child to Michigan City High School, whether you send them to Marquette, if you live in Michigan City, you're still a taxpayer. You're still paying taxes that go to the school system. So I'm representing the taxpayers, and that's why I'm voting for it. The other thing, the city of Hammond, like I said at the last council meeting, they have the program, and every child in Hammond who has the opportunity and qualifies for this program, they can go to high school wherever they want to go to high school. They can go to high school in Chicago, they can go to high school in Bishop Knoll, they can go to high school in Gary, wherever they want to go, and the money follows them. And their population, according to this report that we received, has grown 10,000 people in the last five years since this program started. So I don't know how this could be detrimental to the city. Now, as far as the school system and the funding that we have been hearing about, that for every child that doesn't go to Michigan City High School, we lose $7,000 or $7,100 per child, and that money affects the teachers raises or pay. You know, I just want to say that, you know, Ms. Butner gave us the numbers, and there's actually, a new prairie was included since the last council meeting, so that's another 48 students. For a total of 203 students, you multiply that times 7,100, you're looking at $1,421,000. One mil... So let's just say $1.5 million for students that are not going to the public high school now. And that's not the fault of the Promise Scholarship program. So for that argument, I think the system needs to look at how, what the root cause of that is and how to try to reverse that to bring those children back to increase that funding to help them out. Now, by, so if we go ahead and support the 12 eligible students that are at Marquette right now, we're looking at $84,000 a year to fund that for those students and that's at that high school. So we're going to take $84,000 and try to exclude that from the whole picture, when really, the big picture is $1.5 million that the school system needs to go and get back into their own system and get their funding back. So that's the way I looked at this and trying to rationalize it all. But with those five things brought to light, and that's where I stand on this, I am in full support of it. It shows to me that we're a progressive, proactive government and council, trying to include as many children, young adults as possible into this program to help their future and make Michigan City a better place to live. Thank you.
Any other comments from any of the authors? Seeing that there are none, any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public, public government, and now comments from the council? Councilwoman Jagus?
Yes, so I have like a slightly different opinion, and we can roll the numbers any way you want to look at it. I don't think we looked very hard at how this will impact Michigan City area schools. I am a very big proponent of public schools, and I think we don't know. Yes, there's only, you know, a couple of, a dozen students right now at Marquette, but now, down the line, you know, all the parents may be pulling their kids from Michigan City area schools. I don't know. Strong public schools help our community, help attract people to our community, and will just be a beneficial benefit to us. So I am totally for opening up to renters that go to Michigan City area schools, but I'm going to vote no, because I do not want to support taking any more tax dollars and giving it to parochial school students. So thank you.
Councilwoman Dyche?
I didn't know if anybody had any comments before I moved to...
Any other comments from the council? Yeah. Councilman Dan, Paul?
For a tidbit of information, I want to remind the general public and the council, because I was on the council when we created the docking ordinance for the Riverboat, in that we were inclusive when we did that in every community. And besides, the county government gets a stipend off of that boat. All that money does not come back to Michigan City. So I think that it's a very good point that we send this ordinance to the county and to their county president and ask them if they want to get on board, since they're getting the money from us anyway. And I just thought that was a good point of information for the general public and council members. Thank you.
Were you able to get Councilman Dabney on there? I read your note, but it said, I mean, okay, so he's not online right now. He was going to comment. And I'll just comment, close this up, that I agree with Councilman Jagus. I mean, we've all expressed our opinions on this issue, and we're just going to move forward. But it depends, to me, it's still the measurements of what you're measuring. If we're measuring the success of this program on our ability to pay on the city's budget, you're going to get a different, one answer. If you're measuring the program on how it impacts all children's ability to go to college, because what we're talking about is encouraging, financially encouraging, children to go to college. And I would throw the kitchen sink at that for county, but I don't think that's what we're measuring. I think we're measuring, and this program was meant to measure increased residency and improved attendance at our public school. If you're measuring those two measures, measurements, you're going to come up with a different answer. So depending on what you measure, you're going to get the answer that you desire. And man, if we're just encouraging college attendance for all high school seniors that live in Michigan City and beyond, I could think of a trillion ways. We can really go to town to do that, because they all should be attending trade schools or some kind of extra attendance, but that's not how we operate in the country right now. So, you know, so I'll be voting the way I vote based on those factors. Councilwoman Dyche?
Yeah, and just to add before I make my motion is that, you know, when you start talking about measurements, the Promise Scholarship has been in effect for several years now, and even through that, it has not increased the number, the number of students at Michigan City High School. It's decreased it. So I'm not sure how, you know, we can say that, but I think my number one responsibility is to all Michigan City residents. So with that being said, I move to approve.
Second. And a motion and a second. Mr. Snidler, on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Presblewski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presblewski?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have five in favor and two opposed.
Okay, Ms. Snidler, on any new... Okay, Ms. Nyalov, uh, on any new business, I guess that would be me now, uh, common council appointment expiration dates, uh, appointments to communities and boards before the next final meeting of the council in a calendar year, uh, the schedule will be put out, just informational purposes there, it's on the, on your paper. As an FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Ms. Nancy Moultonhour as a member of the Michigan City Human Rights Commission. Um, would we want to vote on that tonight, or? Might as well? Yeah, yeah, want to go to, okay, yeah. And FYI, Mr. Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment of Ms. Judy Lang as a member of the Michigan City Human Rights Commission. And, uh, before we head on to the vote, would, uh, the nominee have anything to say about that? Now, I don't know if Ms. Lang is here? No, okay, Ms. Moultonhour?
Yeah, Nancy Moultonhour, 107 K Lane, Michigan City, Indiana. Um, I want to thank Mayor Duane Perry for reappointing me to the Michigan City Human Rights Commission, and, um, hopefully you will approve that. Um, I want to bring up something significant. Seven years ago, on December 1st, this common council here actually voted to revise all of the human rights ordinances, there's 23 of them in Michigan City, to include three new classes of individuals, and those were sexual identity, gender ori-, uh, gender orientation, no, gender identity, sexual orientation, and veteran status. And this council voted eight to zero to approve those 23 changes that were made, so that every single ordinance that mentions, um, minority groups now has parallel language, and that's extremely significant. We became the 11th municipality in Michigan City to make those changes. And I really acknowledge now Representative Pat Boy, who was then a city council member, she was the one that worked really hard with me and the members of the Human Rights Commission, and also we had the advice of Megan Buehl, who's Executive Director of Trees in South Bend. And other communities that year were voting this down, no, no, no. It was happening all over Indiana, and Michigan City was bold enough and supportive enough and inclusive enough to say, yes, we want to protect every single person that lives here in Michigan City. So that's my thank you. I started as chair of that Public Action Committee seven years ago, and just this past year, I was very honored and touched that my fellow commissioners actually voted me to be their chairperson last year, and just tonight, they voted me to continue as their chairperson. So this service that I provide for the residents of our community, I consider to be one of the most important things that I do and that all members of the Human Rights Commission do. So, thank you so very much.
Councilman Dabney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, and just speaking, I am the liaison in the Human Rights Commission, and I do attend quite a few of the meetings. I know I couldn't make it tonight, but I do, I'm there 85, 90% of the time. Anyway, uh, Ms. Nancy Moultonhour and Mrs. Judy Lang are both outstanding members of that commission, and very proud to serve with them on that commission, and they do great work. And I'm just, uh, campaigning for them, for the council members to, uh, to vote for them and put them back on that, uh, that commission. Thank you.
Councilwoman, thanks?
I move that we approve, uh, Judy, Judy Lang and Nancy Moultonhour, or approve the advice and consent of the mayor.
Second.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Nyalov on the vote, please?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preselinski?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
And on unfinished business, we have the youth leadership, uh, deal, uh, still there, and then we have the, uh, council has two appointments to the redevelopment commission terms expire 12/31. That's incumbents are Angie Nelson Deitch and Michael Mack. And we are on to comments from the public.
Oh, we have not, we have to do the nominations.
We're going to do?
Yes.
Oh, yes, all right.
Um, where are any applications submitted?
Yeah, you need to open the motion, I mean, you need to open.
What are the other?
Open up the nomination.
You need to open the nomination.
Okay, uh, we will open the nominations.
I nominate Angie Nelson Deitch.
Second.
What are any other?
Point of order, do we get a list of who, who submitted their applications, right? Let's get a, yeah, yeah. If Ms. Nyalov could tell us who submitted.
Okay, we have, um, Kathy Dennis, uh, Michael Benson, Dennis Carroll, Tim Williams, Don Hogan, um, Angie Nelson Deitch.
Can you read that one more time, please? Because I didn't see all those names.
They've been coming through all year.
They've been coming, yeah, they have been coming all year, so.
Okay, can you just give us the final?
All right, Kathy Dennis, Michael Benson, Dennis Carroll, Tim Williams, Dan Hogan, Angie Nelson Deitch.
Okay, nominations are open?
Uh, I would like to nominate Kathy Dennis.
Second.
Yeah, second?
Okay, did we go back to Angie?
Yeah.
She nominated, there was a nomination and a second.
Okay, who was the second? Paul?
No, I seconded.
Oh, right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Nyalov on the vote, please?
No, wait.
No, no, just nomination. All righty, any other nominations? Seeing that there are none, we'll go on to comments from the public. Comments from the public. Just pop up, say your name and address, please. Right, right, right up there. And FYI for everyone, please keep your comments to three minutes, please.
How you doing today? Uh, Brent Tisdale, 301 Bryant Road, Michigan City. Um, sorry, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but, uh, it was kind of brought up tonight about the, you spoke about the utilities with City Hall, and Mr. Meyer, I believe you said that there was plans to have City Hall moved at some point, um, with the ARP funds, that we thought about moving City Hall and the library to open up the entrance to the lake. You know, with the, the city, City Hall is antiquated just altogether. I mean, you walk through City Hall, it doesn't have anything to offer. It's not centrally located to the citizens. We do have the developed area over on Pine. We also have a high school that sits empty that could potentially move into, has classrooms that could be used for offices, a cafeteria that could be used for a council room. Um, but it's just a thought to open up the thoroughfare coming off of Franklin into, into the beach, because we're always talking about bringing money into Michigan City, but realistically, if I have $100 million to invest in this town, there's not much to offer. Uh, not a lot to offer my families, you know, my CEO's families. Our beach is our, is our magnet, it's what brings people to Michigan City, but we don't utilize it, because you either have to go down Pine, you got to go down 12, coming on 2, and there's really just no, um, aesthetics that bring you to the lake. You know, it doesn't take you downtown where we have, uh, uh, First Fridays, you know, and can we look at possibly moving City Hall out of the way? Move the library over to 6 and Pine, where we've already spent money to develop, and open up shops that take you all the way to the lake.
Well, after this, I'm sure there's many of us that could actually speak to that to me, because, uh, you know, you, you, you're speaking of a, uh, something that's been spoken before. So after the meeting, we'll definitely speak to you on both, on both of those.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Kathy Parker, 331 First Street, and, um, following up on Mr. Tisdale's, uh, presentation, I'd like to encourage the city to do more of that. Um, I'm coming at the best of, um, a face, massive Facebook post yesterday on can we get an ice rink? And it started out with a picture of the beautiful, um, La-, not LaPorte, uh, Valparaiso ice rink. It's in a pavilion, there's lights, people flying back and forth, music, it was beautiful. Then somebody posted a picture of what they were looking at from their hotel, um, downstate, they were visiting one of their children at school. Same thing, people out enjoying an ice rink. And, um, people then chimed in, but they had to take their kids to Stevensville to practice for competitive skating. Another mom said, I'm taking my kids to South Bend for the second time in as many weekends, because there are things to do there, including skating. And it's really not, it's more than skating. It's about, what are we going to do? I mean, we talked about commissions, we talked about trees, we talked about electricity, but those are all so intangible. It'd be really nice to have something here, aside from the lake, that the city could be proud of. I mean, we have a splash pad that hasn't been open for two years, and it's an embarrassing splash pad. You want to see a nice splash pad, go to New Buffalo. They have two side-by-side, one for bigger kids, one for smaller. They're adorable. They, they're just, you know, magnificent developments. And ours is just, it just looks like it's rotting away, if it's even open. Um, the same thing with, um, the park. It's an antiquated park, it's not ADA compliant, it's dangerous. And yet, that's what we put in our, you know, Washington Park, our centerpiece. I feel like we're shopping at the bargain basement of projects, and we always get bargain basement enactment. I really would encourage us to start to think bigger, and let's try to do something top shelf for once. LaPorte has a skating rink. I mean, this is not an expensive thing to put together with, with skate rail and a warming house and that sort of thing. Um, I, I just feel like, um, let's put out Daniel Burnham's words, uh, Chicago developer, "The lakefront, make no small plans." And I really wish Michigan City would stop saying, "We can't, we can't afford it," and start to think big.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the public? Dabney's online now? Yeah, oh, Mr. Dabney?
Well, first, first, first of all, I apologize for being unable to attend the meeting and be missed work today, because I wasn't feeling well, and I'll bet you I didn't come to the council meeting, because I wasn't feeling well. But I did know that we were coming up on third reading, uh, with the Promise Scholarship, uh, which I am going to discuss later on Facebook as well, but I did want to try to jump in. I was trying to get in while comments, comments were going on, um, about the Promise Scholarship. But I really wanted to say, um, I heard somebody talking about the $7,100 that we would lose, uh, student that goes out in Michigan City area school system and goes into a parochial school. That is correct. Uh, then they gave numbers of the way it stands right now. Uh, but that is not being able to foresee what could happen, uh, in the near future as we create this pipeline, uh, to allow students to move out of the Michigan City area public schools into parochial school. Um, and that would be at all levels, including the high school level. Kids can move out of Michigan City area schools, high school, even on the, the middle school level, as well as the, um, elementary school level. The Promise Scholarship, when it was first designed, the eligibility started the calculation, seventh grade, eighth grade, all the way up through, uh, your senior, senior year in high school. Now, without that incentive to be able to earn a Promise Scholarship, be in Michigan City area schools in all those years, I, I really believe this is going to start a pipeline of students that leave Michigan City area schools. And once again, it does take $7,100 per student out of the Michigan City area school system. I made the, the, uh, analogy before that I worked in a school system over in East Chicago, and I saw this firsthand, when they pop up in private schools and charter schools and other schools like that, where the kids would filter out of the public school system, which would then take away money to fund your teachers and your staff. That's where teachers and staff are funded strictly on headcount. And as they would lose headcount, they would lose teachers, they would lose administrators, because every year, at the end of the year, they have to look and see, do they have the headcount to be able to bring back all of their teachers? Um, I hope, I said this at the last meeting, I hope this is not the case, but this is what I've seen, uh, happen in different areas, uh, where it damages the public schools. And I'm really concerned about it. I really wish we would have more people from the public school system, uh, stand up and talk about this. They were involved when we originally built the Promise Scholarship. Um, they had, uh, Wyndham McCollum, um, and, you know, others from the, the school system that were there to build this. So I was kind of sad that nobody had a chance to come and talk about this, because this is going to hurt. This is, reminds me of something that, uh, we had a conversation about before. I won't bring that up, because it's, it's just kind of a parallel to the, to the Promise Scholarship, but this is going to start a pipeline of students out of Michigan City areas, and it's going to hurt in the long run. Um, so I don't know, and I heard people say, well, I represent all of the, the residents in Michigan City, all of the taxpayers. I understand that, but me as a Michigan City councilperson, but it is my duty to get in and help the Michigan City area schools. And I think this is a, we're opening the floodgate. Um, I hope it doesn't come to that, but I'm betting it will, because I've seen this happen. Um, and not too long ago, years ago, when I worked at the school city, I also, um, Michigan City area schools, I hear people saying, I support the school system, I support the school system, but yet, we're creating that pipeline to take your students away, take your funding away from your staff. Um, so hopefully, um, the, the hit is not too bad, but me just trying to look down the line and see what's happening in the future, I believe that's, that's what's going to happen. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come on, um, even though I didn't get a chance to attend the whole meeting, but thank you for letting me come on. I'm the president, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Hope you get better, take some Tylenol, put on a mask. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other online comments? Public comments, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council, Councilman Paul Preselinski?
I just want to take this opportunity to, uh, remind everyone what today actually means, is a day that would live in infamy. December 7th, the dastardly attack on Pearl Harbor, where people are, men, US servicemen are still entombed in two, this, uh, two battleships there. So, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of negativity out in the general public right now. What I stated earlier on why this country was founded, was founded on principles of diversity, freedom of religion, and just generally on freedom of choice. So as we go forward, I think everybody should, um, reflect on what's- reflect on what so many people have done for us. So many servicemen and volunteers. And to, uh, take that into, and teach it, not only think about it, but try to instill that in, into young people. And, uh, the, uh, founding fathers were very creative thinkers, and they created the system for which we participate in today. And I'm very thankful for that, but I'm, I'm really thankful for all of the individuals that volunteered or were drafted into the military. And, uh, we, we, we can never and should never forget what the military personnel and their families and volunteers have done for us. And, uh, on that positive note, I want to, uh, say that, uh, under my comments, I wanted to read something into the public record that were taken out of the minutes of the, uh, uh, council at our last meeting. Um, Councilman Paul Prisbalinski questioned Controller Hoffmaster, asking how much money did the CARES Act money save us last year? And how much did we save this year out of the general fund by receiving this money? Controller Hoffmaster responded stating that she believed the total grant received was just over two million dollars. Councilman Prisbalinski then asked, so how much did you say was the portion of this year and last year out of the general fund? With Controller Hoffmaster answering, she believes we spent maybe over a million dollars last year, and then another million this year. With Councilman Paul Prisbalinski stating, this saved us millions of dollars this year and millions of dollars, a million dollars last year from our general fund. And this was extra money in the budget for both years out of the tax drawer. Correct, Mrs. Hoffmaster? With her answer, it was. It was left in the appro, appropriated balance. So, with that note, I want to make sure that that was in the public record, that there was extra money in the budget when the Labor Negotiating Committee was told that there was no money, that we couldn't give people a raise in two thousand and twenty. That's why I referred to that. But also, today I had a, uh, email sent to me that there is a list posted today, or this week, on the, uh, most dangerous cities in Indiana. And I believe that Michigan City was ranked number one. That is another failure of the administration that's in control right now. So not only that, but they said that, or the, they referred to South Bend as number two, Fort Wayne as, I believe, number three, or no, Indianapolis is number three, and Gary at number six. So I think that so, there's something that needs to be done internally in our community because we cannot, we cannot get any kind of growth or do anything positive with recruitment or residence if this stuff is out there. And I'll be getting that email filed in the clerk's office, thank you.
Any other comments from the council, Councilwoman Depp?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that article because, um, um, first of all, we need from our police to get some of those numbers. But I also wanted to talk about the actual article, because I, it's just, first of all, it was innuendo, it was a lot of, um, just ne, negative stereotypical language with no facts, um, to, to support it. And then the, the author of this, this piece, her name is Asiana Tepfinhart. She's an expert writer focusing on interior design and general home tips. That's her background, okay? Writing is her life, this is her bio. And it's what she does best. Her interests include art and real estate investment. So, um, you know, she mentioned seventy percent of the residents surveyed hated the city. Did anybody up here receive a survey? Did anybody in the audience rece, receive a survey? So it's garbage, in, in my opinion. Yeah, so seven out of ten people, right? Um, I, I think she, uh, she, I don't even think she's been to Michigan City before, even Indiana. So she's from the East Coast, and, uh, she just talked about, I was reading it, and I was just like, okay, whatever. Um, but I think she's used past negative articles that have been presented within the city that are outdated. Um, I think, um, you know, I know my, my daughter got a high class, uh, quality education. Um, so, yeah, with that being said, I think it's garbage. I'm not gonna be bothered with her and whatever. She can come to Michigan City and see for herself. Um, outside of that, um, it's been, um, it's the holiday season, so I hope people are in the, uh, uh, in the giving mode. I know the Salvation Army needs volunteers, um, at some of their sites and locations. Um, please, you know, if you got money in your pockets, or, or, uh, there are several organizations just taking clothing and gloves and all that thing, all those things. So, um, you know, just, I hope everybody has a joyous holiday season, uh, this year. Several, uh, holidays are being celebrated at this time, so I just, I know we have another council meeting, but as we prepare for the new year, um, I, I just, you know, pray for everybody's, uh, good spirits in the holiday season. And I'm so glad that the Promise Scholarship, we've moved ahead, but again, we're getting updates twice a year, so if you need to make adjustments, we can do that next year. So, um, I appreciate everybody's support for that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman Don Prisbalinski.
Uh, just a few items, and I know that Kathy, uh, Parker had just left, but I was gonna talk to her about some of the items that she had, uh, uh, mentioned, which were all good items to me, because these, some of these things I've heard about. Laporte's doing a few things, Michigan City, myself, with the Park Department, I'm looking into some, uh, some projects that I know Kathy's interested in. So, uh, moving on from there, I know that football season's over with, but I did go to the semi-state game. Uh, the Wolves came up a little bit short. They ran into a very good Zionsville football team, a very big team. But I just want to congratulate them on an outstanding, uh, football season they had. And I'm sure next year is even gonna be, uh, a better season. Uh, the parks look beautiful. I know Terry's here from the, uh, uh, the department that, you know, promotes, promotional department. And, uh, yeah, the parks look beautiful, Washington Park looked beautiful. I didn't get to attend the parade, had some visitors at the house, but, uh, good work on all that stuff. I know it takes a lot of work and coordination. Uh, the COVID in LaPorte County, and I don't want to bring this up, but I think we need to, that I've heard that it's almost on the verge of going red again in LaPorte County, so we need to, uh, buckle down again and take this serious. It's not going away. I hear that, you know, even fatalities are starting to, on, on the increase, uh, so many more a day, so let's get serious about that again. And I know that we got the resignation letter from our fabulous, famous, very competent, uh, council attorney, that Mr. Myers is gonna be, uh, retiring at the end of the, end of the year from the city council. And Jim, I just want to thank you, uh, personally, uh, instead of waiting until the last meeting, but thank you personally for all the work and all the guidance you've given me, both as a president of the council and as a, uh, city councilman, on the legalities, on how things, uh, go within the city. And, uh, your advices, your advice has always been right on the money. So I appreciate all your hard work and effort, taking the phone calls and calling me back. Very prompt, very professional. And, uh, from my part, from my, uh, perspective, you're gonna be missed, uh, very, very much, uh, on my behalf. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Gs?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to mention a couple of things. Yes, it is the holiday season, and not only monetary gifts or physical gifts, but I want everyone to think about kindness, and just a kind act or two might really change somebody's day, week, or month. So a lot of people are struggling. Sometimes struggling people are not very easy to be kind to, but, you know, I learned this as a high school teacher. Sometimes the people who are crabby, they just need a kind word or someone just to talk to them. So keep that in mind as you go about the city. We need to build our sense of community, we need to build our sense of kindness. Thanks.
And just to close it out, uh, I read that Dangerous Cities, uh, site too. I, I personally believe it's fake. There's two words that are used in, in the internet we use. One is an algorithm, Facebook, you know, they find out what you like and they multiply it times a thousand. And the other one is an aggregator. And, uh, I could create a new site just like that, to where, you know, you put up Michael Mack such and such, and just connect to a whole lot of other websites, so it looks legit. Um, and it just makes me, when I, when I read that article, um, if you want to look at the prosperity that's coming to Michigan City, watch a redevelopment committee meeting, or talk to anybody on the Economic, Economic Development Committee. Uh, talk to anybody that's in the, uh, housing business, or the, uh, desire to, uh, do Airbnbs. There is a huge market of financed, well-financed people that are coming to Michigan City. There's big ideas that are already started, and there's bigger ideas that are being discussed. Uh, you know, when I see this stuff, I think of somebody that might be trying to get a good price on something, so they throw a little water on something personal. But it, it is the most phony article I've, I've ever read, from an insider's point of view, knowing actually what's going on. We're, we're, we're not dilapidated, and we're not heading south. There's big things for this entire region that are really in the works already. Um, so definitely you can believe that, and, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, second? You adjourn.